Good evening and welcome to the November twentieth, two thousand and twenty five meeting of the Mount Juliet Municipal and Regional Planning Commission meeting. As I like to do as we start each meeting, like to announce our quorum requirements and voting requirements. As a quorum is the presence of five members of the commission shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of business. Chairperson may at his or her discretion wait up to thirty minutes after the scheduled meeting time for a quorum to be present. In the event that a member is required to leave a meeting prior to adjournment and the departure causes a loss of quorum, no further official action may be taken until a quorum is restored other than an adjournment. A majority of those commissioners present and in no case less than four affirmative votes shall be required to decide any item of business requiring action by the commission. I'd just say that as well because we do have two members absent tonight. I actually believe that both members are traveling overseas tonight, so happy for them and hope they have safe travels. Always nice when we see a full house here tonight, some maybe a first time, second or third, but welcome. We do enjoy and look forward to hearing from you all should there be an opportunity that that you wish to speak tonight. To begin our meeting too, wanted to extend a thank you to staff for for our continuing education that we participated in or some of the members of the planning commission. I think Boza and other various and staff alike, we went downtown for the Summit ten conference, which was a meeting of not only Wilson County, but the contiguous counties to Nashville Davidson County, got to learn a little bit about what is going on there. Had some unique speakers present that, but talking about overall urban planning and kind of what is going on here in middle Tennessee. So some very interesting education and thank you to the senior citizen center. They they let us drive their bus down there so we could all go in one car and be together and it was a nice afternoon and and so I appreciate staff of their organization of that as they always do each and every year. So thank you all for putting that together. Thank you all for spending your day with us and getting us educated out there and keeping us in compliance and to be members of the planning commission. With that being said, we will move on with our agenda tonight. Our first item up is to set our agenda. I am not aware of any changes, amendments or adjustments. Seeing none, we will set the agenda as stated and as posted. Our next item up on our agenda, we'll begin with our staff reports. Start off with Mr. John, planning.
I think I'll defer to Jill on this one. She have a few things to say.
All right.
First off, would like to wish everybody a hefty Thanksgiving coming up. I hope all of you have a blessed one and enjoy time with your families. I want to did a what Commissioner Winchester said, we do want to thank each and every one of you that were able to attend the power of ten conference with us downtown. I do think we gained a lot of valuable insight into that we are not the only ones within this community that are struggling to maintain development, looking for a path ahead for our future. Got a lot of good contacts out of it too, so we look forward to reaching out to some additional communities to see how not only they can help us, but how we can help them as well. So we want to thank you, those of you that were not able to attend, I will be happy to get with you to give you some other options of getting your four hours of required training before the end of the year. So I'll try to touch base with you all at the first of the week, but wanted to thank you again for all your help and your patience with us.
Wonderful, thank you. Shane, Public Works.
First of all, do want to wish you guys a happy Thanksgiving next week, so a few updates. I was just getting the report in from our Public Works Director. Card Road Signal bids were open this week, came in two hundred thousand dollars under budget. Wow. And we also just received the notice proceed on the T dot construction for Town Center Greenway Phase Three. We he's gonna go to bid in January and hope to start construction later in the spring. Old Lemon Dirt Road widening, if many residents have seen a lot of utility relocation going on right now, the roadway project itself, expect open bids in February and starting in late spring as well. So a lot of things going on on our end. That concludes my staff report, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you guys. And I understand that and I know this falls underneath Public Works, but successful tree lighting the other night and heard from a lot of people that thoroughly enjoyed that. So one of those unspoken things that you guys had underneath the radar that think falls underneath you guys a little bit out there. So thank you for staff and and the community and commissioners for organizing something like that. I'd also be remissed, I was reminded this evening or or today that Ms. Sheila Luckett is retiring. And I think December fourth is going to be her retirement celebration, but it's hard to fathom the city without Sheila Luckett as a part of it. She's been very important to me in my life and and growing up here in Mount Juliet as I have and always been somebody that's been accessible, been compassionate, been caring, watched the city grow the way that it has, it's been a part of it in so many different aspects. The city will be missing Sheila Luckett out there because she really cares about this community and everybody within it, whether or not through church, through scouts, just the city as a whole, just an all around amazing woman and my gratitude for her long time service to the city of Mount Juliet and this community and helping it be the place that it is to this day. Very, very special woman, so thank you to Sheila Luckett for that. Our next item up does fall underneath our citizen comments. This time we'll take citizen comments, public is welcome and encouraged to make public comment about any item on our agenda. There'll be two opportunities for you to make those comments. You may speak now or you may speak when the item is presented to the planning commission, kind of an either or. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. Also want to make a note on that, as I say, the three minutes or less, because we do have a full house, we want to be conscious and everybody that wants to speak, everybody wants to speak, come on up. But if you see me up here, kind of raise my hand as you're speaking, it's not for questions, just kind of to let you know, kind of summarize that you got one minute left of those three to so summarize your thoughts and your comments back there for us and please allow for time for others to speak at the meeting. So if you see me doing that, consider to wave at you or or no questions, but please summarize if you do see me do that to wrap it up for three minutes. So anyone that wishes to address the planning commission at this time is welcome and encouraged to do so, and please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no citizen comments at this time, we'll move forward with our first item on the agenda. That falls underneath item five A of minutes approval, it's to review the minutes from the October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five Mount Juliet Planning Commission meeting. Do I have any amendments, typos, adjustments? Commissioner Giles, please.
Unless I unless I didn't see it, but I spoke with the city attorney, I think that we need to add in there that when I left the table, I abstained because of personal and financial interest in six K. Probably needs to be recorded in there.
You're coming, very well. Any additional comments, question seriously?
I have twelve movers. There's no way I did twelve movers.
He did.
No.
So it's, I don't know what happened to him.
Twelve of them. Commissioner Searcy was absent.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
I mean, look at the minutes. Did y'all read?
We appreciate your presence even though your presence wasn't here.
I might have done one.
Yes, sir. Duly noted.
That can be corrected.
Yes, sir. Any additional changes? Typos errors? That being said, looking for a motion regards this item on our agenda.
Those two prove.
Motion?
Give my comment back.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye against abstentions? So approved. Next item up on our agenda is our consent agenda. We'll begin with item six A, it's a development letter of credit number S L C zero 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 five six three four for Baird Farms Phase Three B and the amount of ninety one thousand six hundred seventy six dollars and fifteen cents can be released. Item six B, the development letter of credit number S L C zero 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 five nine two seven for Bears Baird Farms Phase Three C and the amount of a hundred and two thousand four hundred and thirty nine dollars and twenty four cents can be released. Item six C, the development letter of credit number nine zero three five nine seven seven four for Walton's Grove Phase Four and the amount of two hundred and sixty six thousand seven hundred and eighty seven dollars and eighty cents can be released. Item six D sewer letter of credit number one eight one three nine zero nine seven for Beckwith Point, the amount of a hundred and eighty seven thousand four hundred and seventy seven dollars and fifty cents can be released. Item six E sewer letter of credit number two seven one zero zero seven eight two zero three for Hibbett Station and the amount of two hundred and forty thousand three hundred and thirty four dollars and fifty cents can be released. Item six F, review and adopt the two thousand and twenty six Mount Juliet Regional Planning Commission and Border Zoning Appeals Submittal Calendars. Item six G, review the final plat for Kane Break Phase Two, Section One, located off West Division Street. Item six H, review the final plat for Bender's Cove Phase Two, located off Bender's Ferry Road. Begin with planning, Mr. John, any comments?
Sure thing, only comments would be anything in the staff report, recommend approval. The couple flats and then the other planning related one on there is the calendar, so no comments on those. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. Shane, anything from Public Works?
Staff recommends approval with our comments, thank you.
Very well. Questions, comments from the commission? I got one real quick one. Item six H on the Bender's Cove, they're moving on to Phase Two over there. CO still tied to the completion of the road, correct? And what is the expected completion of the road?
Sam might help me on this one, the CO trigger was adjusted to the twenty fifth. They are ran, there were some legal interpretations that were ultimately made from the city manager's office to change that trigger to the twenty fifth CO. I believe they'll also be coming in with the future PUD amendment due to change that CO trigger even further due to utility conflicts with the gas company primarily.
Please, please, please.
The ordinance allowed for a triggering event to happen, getting on the twenty fifth CO, it was based on a hundred and twenty days they got to in good faith acquire the land needed for the right of way. They weren't able to do that within a hundred and twenty days, which triggered the city taking over, which gave them the twenty fifth CO. We never actually had to take over because they ended up agreeing, but that's how they got the twenty fifth CO.
Okay, so at the twenty fifth CO, that trigger will kick in. Very well, cool. So I have any further questions, comments? Seeing none, let's call for citizen comments regards to any item on the consent agenda. Anyone wishing to make comment about any item, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no citizen comments at this time, we do need to close the planning commission meeting in order to open a public hearing. The public hearing is in regards to items six G and six H. Six G is to review the final plat for Kane Break Phase Two, Section One, located off West Division Street. Item six H is to review the final plat for Bender's Cove Phase Two, located off Bender's Ferry Road. Anyone wishing to make comment during the public hearing on either of those items, welcome and encouraged to do so. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no citizen comments at this time, we'll close our public hearing, reopen our planning commission meeting, and at which time I'm looking for a motion in regards to the items on our consent agenda. Very well. It's a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye against abstentions, so approved. Next item up on our agenda files under falls underneath Final Master Development Plan, site plans, we'll begin with item seven A, it's to review the Final Master Development Plan Site Plan for Golden Bear Wine and Spirits located at sixty three thirty Golden Bear Gateway. Ms. Jill?
This is just a site plan that's coming in as part of the previous project, Jolene project that was submitted in actually two thousand and twenty two, this is under that PUD, it's for a site plan and Final Master Development Plan. The proposed project area is approximately one point two three acres, it's eleven thousand plus square feet of retail. They currently after reviewed meet all the commercial design standards, their vehicular access will be directly to Golden Bear Gateway. Their parking is adequate for the use as applied for, they only have one minor waiver to allow three point two percent of metal coping under that, otherwise it is going to be a primarily masonry product. The overall, the project looks really good. Staff does recommend approval of the site plan and Final Master Development Plan with the requests include the conditions of approval as noted by staff.
Very well. Shane, Public Works?
Same thing, we recommend approval with our comments, the reminder in nature, they followed the PUD, thank you.
Very well. Questions or comments from the commission? One super minor comment, just something I would like to see added. I'm correct on the site plan at the east side where there's kind of a three potential for a three way stop. To have a stop bar as well, may maybe in the future creating a three way access as this project continues to run, I believe east on the undeveloped lots, just kind of make that a little bit of a lots of parking and movement in that three way right there, especially with the one way traffic around the site. Just request to add an additional stop bar on the, I believe it's going to be the eastward lane in the front of the building. That's it. Any other questions, comments? Please, please, Commissioner Rass?
Just for the record, I'm and I don't, there's, there's nothing wrong with the site plan necessarily, I'm just not a fan of parking across a frontage road for commercial businesses. Not a fan of it, I know it's, it's happening along here and just for the record, I'm, I'm not a fan of it, I think it's a safety issue. But it's, there's, there's nothing we can do to make a change.
Further questions, comments? Let's go ahead and ask for citizen comments regards this item on the agenda, any citizen wishing to make comment, welcome and encouraged to do so. Please come to the microphone, name and address for the record. Seeing no citizen comments at this time, before motion regards this item on our agenda? Motion and a second, may I include the and the additional comment on the stop bar? May I include that? Perfect, it's a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye against abstentions, so approved. Next item up on our agenda is item seven B, it is to review the site plan for the Weller Life Amenities Center located at five thirty five Pleasant Grove Road. Ms. Jill?
Thank you again, and she stated this is for a site plan for the Weller Life Amenities Center, they are coming back in following the approval of the preliminary master development plan via ordinance twenty five twenty six, which was done in August of twenty five. This amenity center, under those conditions of the PMDP, is required to be completed by the thirty fifth certificate of occupancy. It's an eighty five hundred square foot amenity center, approximately thirty five hundred square foot pool, a dog park and a pickleball court. The male kiosk is unique to this site because it's located internally within the amenity center and the postmaster has approved this location. They are also including fifteen parking spaces for the convenience of the residents of that area. They meet and actually exceed the minimum code requirements under the preliminary master development plan. They will also be meeting within the previous architectural variances that were approved at fifty fifty, they're coming in with a sixty one percent masonry product and thirty nine percent board and batten. Staff does recommend approval of a site plan and requested conditions be included as noted by staff.
Well, thank you. Shane, anything from Public Works?
I need to strike comment three under engineering because that's in direct contradiction to comment number five, so typo and mud part, but outside of that, recommend approval with the conditions as noted.
Very well. Questions or comments from the commission? Seeing no questions or comments, this time let's go ahead and call for citizen comments in regards to this item on the agenda, any citizen wishing to make comment on this item? It's welcome and encouraged to do so, please come to the microphone, name and address for the record. Seeing no citizen comments at this time, like to ask for a motion in regards to this item on our agenda.
With Shane's comments from Public Works.
Very well. It's motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye against abstentions, so approved. Next item up on our agenda is item seven C, is to review the site plan for Victory Nissan located at five oh five Pleasant Grove Road. Mr. John?
Sure thing, another, another fifth, third, second one, maybe this year. Oh, sorry, I'm on the, I'm, I'm skipped, I'm on order here. We'll talk about Nissan.
I have those. Um, where is my Nissan?
Sorry, package's out of order. Okay, so Victory Nissan, this is on in paddocks and basically it's pretty good overall. The reason for it being on the regular agenda primarily is the facade waivers that they're asking for, some of the two waivers. As you can see, it's a, you know, kind of a modern looking building, it's forty seven and a forty seven point three five percent brick. So it's primarily secondary materials, but you can see from the design of the building, it's, you know, it reminds me of the Andrews Cadillac down the road, kind of a similar, you know, it's, it's different. I actually like the way it looks. Screen wall in lieu of parapet wall on the, on the roof also. They don't normally support that, but given the design of this building, particular building, I think it, I think it makes sense. But other than that, the rest of the comments are pretty straightforward, standard comments for, for a site plan. So we'd recommend approval and with the, with the waivers, if you so choose to agree. But that's, that's basically the big one on this one.
Thank you. Shane, anything from Public Works?
We recommend approval with our comments, one note, there is an existing bio retention area that is labeled in the plant set that will have to be brought into code compliance. It's poorly functioning at the moment, but that's something that can be worked on during the construction of this building if it's approved and we'll just have to be functioning by the time CO is issued.
Very well, thank you. So open up questions, comments in the commission, Commissioner Giles, please.
So on the very first page under overview and history, is that correct? And maybe I just didn't have enough coffee when I was reviewing all of this, but is that supposed to be adjacent to Walmart or adjacent to At Home?
It's closer to Walmart, but yeah, across the parking lot.
But it's across, it says on the south side, I just, I'm always used to thinking adjacent as being contiguous almost, you know, so.
It's, yeah, it straddles the access to At Home.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So and then I want to talk about this screening, have we, because some of the others that's on here, we were making them put the parapet down there, parapet in there. So have we voted on screens, just screen, I mean, I may have missed that too. Have we voted on many waivers for screens or have we made them put the parapets on there so that it's solid? I don't.
I think of a couple of hotels, if I'm not mistaken.
And you're permitted to allow that if you want.
Last one I can recall was maybe one of the hotels over, I don't know whether it's in Providence Central or Providence.
Very tall one or something.
It was a tall building.
Seven, Seven Brew as well, there's been a few of those, some of the, you're like that modular seven bird building has a screen wall on the roof. So it made fifty fifty?
Yeah, be fair. Good questions.
Yeah, it's hard for me to.
Got one question, this may be Todd, maybe Shane. One of the things with this site plan that you really see where you're kind of, you're splitting inventory in this case by the access road right there. So obviously we got the crosswalks striped and everything there. Just thinking relative to the Walmart site there across the street. And kind of guesstimating this, I guess, as best I can, the Walmart side does have a stop sign right there as you enter that side off of Pleasant Grove Road. Would it be applicable as well to create this cross access as a kind of a four way stop, even though two of the ways would be the parking lot, but one of the ways or both other ways would be that access road to put a stop sign right there just to further ensure that we're going to get pedestrian traffic over there? Do you want to go buy your new three fifty Z or something?
I was on the fence about making them do a pedestrian beacon there. My general thought was the volumes on this road probably didn't warrant it.
Well, I'm almost thinking about what happens when the other parcel next to, because this very well, most things are catalyst to something else. And so you've got raw land adjacent to At Home back there. And if I'm not mistaken, this is a possible another entry point all the way to old Pleasant Grove Road at some point. So while we got the opportunity, would it be, I mean, it's just a kind of a four way stop, I was thinking more of a four way, bring them to a stop, just like you do at Walmart across the street.
Is Walmart a four way stop or does the entrance keep going?
I think it's, it's just coming off of Pleasant Grove that you stop, but maybe the traffic, it's a three way stop, the traffic coming out does not, but the side to side and entrance does, is that right? I think that's right.
I think that's the other way.
Okay, is that right?
The idea being that you, you don't want stop traffic queuing back on Pleasant Grove Road. Yeah, I don't think that would be a problem at this location. It's one of those things where an always stops probably not warranted there, but it's outside the right of way, so it's not our responsibility. Wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, that's, I mean, you know, it's a four way stop, it's not like, I don't think that there'll be that much queuing back there, even if the property does develop, but we are sitting here noting that, you know, it was a bread store, you're gonna go from here to across the street to, you know, we might buy your bread here, but you're gonna go over here to receive it, you're gonna have to cross the road either which way to potentially do it. I would imagine the bulk of their inventory is going to be on the main lot, but nevertheless, people enjoy options these days and good chance that foot traffic and or golf cart traffic or something like that, shuttle traffic could get over there, it seems like it just, while we can, maybe add a stop sign right there, if that's something that you think wouldn't cause any harm and.
No, I don't, I don't think there'd be any real harm done. If you just adds a precaution in the condition, add a clause stating the city reserves the right to remove it.
Okay.
In case down the line, we do have queuing issues.
Sure, sure, yeah, and maybe city finds that it's really not warranted out there, that's not generating that much because it's just kind of staged inventory, but the bulk is over there. But yeah, nevertheless, we are proving something that we know is going to have pretty steady foot traffic or potential for right there, make me feel a little better, perfect.
Are you talking about the signal one, the, the big, the, the flashing one that you press like on?
Yeah, that, that was my original thought for that vocation, but it quite frankly seemed excessive for the amount of foot traffic expected.
There, I think the increased traffic is going to come, some of it from the weller that was just, that's going to come. And so with, with people walking, of course, I walk up that way too, and people don't walk, I mean, people don't watch sometimes, so.
Yeah, stop sign there.
Yeah.
Very well, further questions, comments on the commission? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open this up for citizen comments, anyone wishing to make comment at this time is welcome and encouraged to do so, and please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no citizen comments at this time, looking for a motion in regards to this item on our agenda. I'll make a motion for approval, including the requested variances, also with the addition to add a four way stop sign at.
Uh, also with the addition, uh, to add a, uh, four-way, uh, stop sign at, um, I guess the entrances to unnamed access road, uh, with the city's ability to remove them in the future, should it be warranted. Okay? Okay. It's a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal five by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against abstentions. So approved. Next item up on our agenda is item seven D is to review the site plan for Fifth Third Bank located at nineteen oh one North Mount Juliet Road. Mr. John.
Finally get to talk about the bank?
Yes, sir.
Okay, another, another fifth third location. This is an Everett Downs Sprouts PUD. Nineteen oh one North Mount Juliet Road. Um, this is very similar to the one that was approved on Golden Bear a few months ago. And much like the last one, it basically is compliant with code. Except for the commercial design standards, again, this one's a lot more modest. They got more, um, modest ask, got more masonry. Um, you can see by, they had a total sixty-eight and a half percent masonry on this structure. And again, we have a screen wall on this one. And if you look at the elevations, it's a very shiny little portion on the roof on the back towards the, on the northwest elevation, you can see it there. Um, and it's going to be brick. That screen wall is going to be brick. Um, I'd imagine, I don't remember if I cut my head, but I'd imagine the previous, uh, Fifth Third Bank had the same ask because pretty similar. Um, and then the other, the, the third waiver request is for thin brick. This is, uh, there's a little, uh, detail in the plans. This is, uh, it's thin brick. Thin in depth. It's masonry. It's grouted. It's individually laid. It's just the brick is hat, you know, a reduction in width, weight and, but functionally it will look like real brick. Um, so with that caveat of being grouted and individually laid, we'd support the thin, thin brick in this instance. Um, I think the rest of the conditions are pretty, pretty, pretty minor for a site plan and we are recommending approval. And that should do it. Thank you.
Very well. Shane, Public Works?
We recommend approval with our conditions. They're minimal in nature and more, we like general notes, you know? Pretty good plan.
Very well. Thank you. Questions, comments from the commission? Commissioner Jones?
I just want to comment, I think this is a, a great addition to that area because it's, it's, it's a walkable, trying to get into a walkable downtown area. And there's not many banks in that area. And so people are walking to Sprouts and they're, you know, hopefully walk the bank. Be, you know, vehicles off the road, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it's, it's good.
Very well. Commissioner George, please.
For Todd, any, any concerns with the teller laying the queuing right there with it being so close to the access?
Our, our code calls for five vehicles of queuing, I believe, and that's a lot at a bank.
Yeah. Not on a Friday, I mean.
That's fair.
Yeah.
Set up that direct deposit, folks.
Yeah.
But no, I don't, I don't foresee it being a serious concern.
Thank you.
I got just one comment and, uh, and it is all on that quick brick. Um, I did take the time to visit, uh, the Metro Brick website, watch their, uh, six, seven minute YouTube video on, uh, install an application, uh, which I am very familiar with. Um, sort of like this laying tile up on the side of a building is what this is. And that is essentially what you're doing, um, is you're laying tile on the side of a building. Um, does it meet the terminology of being clay berate and, and, you know, like a quote unquote queen or king brick does? Um, technically they are made the same way. Uh, outside of the way they are made, there is zero resemblance to the two. Um, if you're familiar with mortar, uh, the mortar in this case, um, if you ever watched a brick mason put it up, it's applied with a trowel. And the mortar is troweled in and then joined it in, sometimes flush, sometimes recess. In this case, it's done with tile mortar in a bag, which is a different continuity, different texture, different material. Um, so therefore your joint, where they say is the same, is not the same. So the brick looks, looks the same, uh, but the material and overall integrity of the structure don't match what our intent of real brick is. Um, and therefore I have a struggle with it. Uh, if you watch their video, you basically frame it. Uh, you apply foam board, um, then you apply a waterproofing, which has to be applied specifically. Then you apply a lathe, then you apply a mortar, which must set up properly. Then you apply a mortar again, and then you stick your bricks on there. You let those set up, then you come back again and you apply a mortar in which they see explained to you in detail that you don't get the mortar on the brick because it doesn't wash off. Um, it's just not brick. I mean, it's sticking tile on the side of a building is what it is. And, um, that is the only I agree with every other comment. It's a great place for it. Um, like the facade and like the look, I just, you know, it's different if you're requesting that in a limited area, uh, because you are capable of making a queen or a king brick, uh, match up with a cut brick. Um, and sometimes you have to go to a cut brick application when it's above a roof or an, uh, an element in which it's unable to carry. In this case here, I don't see any of those factors being applicable. Um, and it's not necessarily a cheaper way out. This is more expensive product than a real brick. Um, so it's not necessarily a cheaper way out by, by making them stay to a real brick. It saves them money. Um, but that's where I have a hard problem with that. I, I just, I don't like it. And, um, I'll leave it at that.
Please, Commissioner Frank?
Does it satisfy?
Okay. Yeah.
In our opinion, is it?
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, it seems like it's more, would be more expensive just because of all the.
Oh, it is.
It seems to me.
It is, trust me. Yeah. Yeah. Do we have representation for the project? Please, please, microphone, name and address for the record.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Ty Cole. I'm the project architect, uh, for it. Uh, address is nine twelve Saltre Road, Birmingham, Alabama.
Thank you for coming.
Comments to the brick, uh, we're a modular company, so this building is actually kind of like the Seven Brew comes in modular. Uh, the reason we're using the thin brick, we actually put the brick on the building in the plant. We, our walls are made for stove panels. And when we have to do all brick or the Wayne Scott, which is what you always do, we use our stove panel, which has all the moisture protection, all that stuff. We adhere all the brick and the things and we travel to wherever we're going, whether we're going to Florida, Tennessee, North Carolina with the brick on it and set it in place. So it does cost more, but allows all that work to be done in the plant so that once you get to the field, you stitch it together much faster, a lot less site time, turn the bank over, uh, to the community much faster.
True.
That's kind of the reason why there, the brick itself, it's the same brick as the modular brick also, you know, the way they make it from that standpoint. Uh, it's just, yeah, the insulation of it's a different way of doing it. Um, I don't know about the videos saying you can't wash the grout off because we do that all the time.
It says, you said you must use a high pressure, high heat to get it off.
Yeah, we, we're, it's just typical masonry cleaning to take the grout off and everything. Now maybe you get adhesive on it. Maybe that's what they were talking about, but from a grout standpoint, it's just like, it's a masonry building. If you submit it. Photographs of some of our examples, even how we do the, uh, Wayne Scott top with the L shapes, make it look like a roll lock all the way around from the full brick. But yeah, we travel them across, you know, the southeast at this point and, uh, don't even have any problems.
Fascinating. Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm familiar with the construction and everything of them and had enough of the modulators as well. Uh, it's, uh, never thought that, uh, well, I guess we did. I was here when we adopted, uh, the brick and stone ordinance for the city and, and actually the representative for the brick industry argued with us about adopting bricks. So it was awfully funny on that, but yeah, it's, uh, it does meet our qualification. It is a different and I just don't like the product, don't agree with the product in this, uh, particular use, especially for just lower base of a building where it looks like you're on basically a water table around the building. And, um, you know, especially a bank, I challenge you to do something nicer and, uh, stick built, made a permanent affection to the community, not something that we're going to roll in, drop off, open up. You know, it used to be a time where you had safe deposit boxes and stuff like that. I challenge everybody to put one in there, it would blow away.
No, we can't.
Nope.
That's a good question. Is there one in there?
No.
We have a big safe. We don't, they, they don't do safety deposit boxes. And even though these are modular, once we put it all together, you can't take this apart and it's, it's there forever.
Yeah. Commissioner Joe?
Y'all got a maintenance schedule if a brick were to fall off or break, you could fix it?
Oh, yeah. Fifth Third has a national company that takes care of all its facilities, whether it's our brick or the regular bricks. Something happens, a car hits the corner of it, yeah, yes.
I mean, as long as they've got a maintenance schedule, it meets our code. I mean, I have seen us completely throw away our design standards for popular burger joints that I won't name their name before, and I warned and raised alarms about that. So I'm, I'm fine with this.
Agreed. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Exactly. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Further questions, comments? This time, uh, let's go and open the floor for citizen comments. Any citizen wishing to make comment during this time, welcome, encouraged to do so. Please go on the microphone, name and address for the record. Seeing no citizen comments at this time. I'd like to, uh, ask for a motion regarding this item on our agenda.
I make the motion approval.
Motion.
Conditions, um, staff supports. Missing anything?
Yeah. Mr. Cersei. Yeah. Motion second by Commissioner Cersei. Uh, all those in favor, signal five by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against abstentions? So approved. Next item up on our agenda falls underneath a, uh, PUD amendment, and it is a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners. It's item eight A. It's review the amendment to allow for outside sales to the Providence Central Preliminary Master Development Plan PUD located Providence Parkway and Central Park. Mr. Joe?
Um, as you stated, this is for a major PUD amendment going back for the Providence Central PUD that was originally approved in twenty thirteen via ordinance twenty thirteen twelve. This is merely to amend a use listing, um, that was in, taken care of originally with this, uh, CMU zone property portion of the PUD. Um, the intent is to return some uses back to the PUD permanently by right within the zoning code. Um, it was originally allowed by right, but the applicant at the time, and I guess in discussions with staff and probably at the Board of Commissioners decided to remove some of those uses. Um, the intent is to include back the, uh, the use for, um, excuse me, I just lost my space here, um, for specific parcels as shown within the staff report to include outside material, equipment, sales and repair yards. The reason for this is, is they've got a national retailer tenant that is looking at this, uh, location. And in order to, uh, apply for this location, they would need the utilization for outside material storage such as lumber, plants, et cetera. So that is the only change to this PUD amendment. It's just to allow that use to go back in that would have originally been allowed by right.
Very well.
So, um, staff does, uh, recommend positive recommendation back to the Board of Commissioners.
I would imagine this one is not a public work, Shane. Very well, yeah. But, uh, questions, comments from the commission? I know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to make one comment, uh, on this. We would like for it to be included, uh, as well. Um, or considered at least as it goes before the Board of Commissioners. Um, no trailers in the parking lot. Um, no, uh, containers, i.e. basically as a trailer without wheels. And, uh, no prefab buildings as well in the parking lot. You know, if you need to do your lumber or plant sales, um, great, but no trailers with mice and rats running out of them and stuff like.
I, I do disagree with, uh, what kind of trailers are we talking?
Like eighteen wheeler trailers.
So not trailers for sale.
I'm with that. You could have that, those as of right now.
Tractor Supply does. Somebody who sells trailers.
Yeah.
No, thinking of like, um,
Is that straw?
Your wheat straw and those big.
No, I agree. Yep.
Yeah, because they seem to never be the nice ones, uh, that are parked there, but which one looks worse? Let's stick it out there in the parking lot kind of deal.
You're talking about the, the stores, buildings?
Thinking about sheds, because they build sheds, set them in the parking lot and then try to get you to buy them. And it's just not tasteful to the surrounding neighbors, retailers and in my opinion, plenty of places to buy or see sheds. You know, look at your catalog out there if you need to. But thinking of more, uh, you know, could get away with the, the sheds or the building, prefab sheds or buildings more than the trailers or containers that they drop with mainly the wheat straw or seasonal products, those seasonal sales right in the middle of the parking lot where they'll set the trailer, open it up and be able to secure it kind of a thing.
Thing about those buildings are, of course, is this close to residential? Most of it becomes, and we're thinking that it is, most of that's around residential. So it's, it's, I mean, it's not an eye, eye sore to me because I'm not looking at through my window or my deck every day. So the buildings don't bother me as long as it's in an area where the, it's other commercial around and you've got people, you don't have people living there. So I look at them today, not literally, I just drove.
I was thinking about the one in Hermitage. Look at that one up there and it's kind of resembles all that. You got a whole section of the parking lot that is, uh, um, rental equipment. You get a whole section of the parking lot that is a trailer, uh, two trailers, matter of fact. And just saying, you know, I don't even mind the rental equipment, uh, but the trailers in particular, you know, all of a sudden you take this and we're approving, we could be approving something with two hundred and fifty parking places by the time they're done. Really, you got a hundred parking places because they're going to park. Not nice stuff out there. Useful stuff because I buy a ton of them, but not very pretty to die. So they're just.
I've got a, I had a question because I agree with everything you're saying. I just want to ask our city attorney. If, if we're giving, let's say a positive recommendation hypothetically on these uses of outside materials, equipment sales, do these comments go anywhere or would it be more impactful to do a negative recommendation? Because I feel like if we approve for outside materials and equipment sales, but then we add the stipulations, it kind of contradicts giving the approval of that.
Do you guys add it to?
This is just a.
So if we add it, even though that the zoning could allow for it, these comments would, unless it gets next to the DOC, of course, but, okay. Okay.
Good point. You have something you want to quote, Commissioner Frank?
Yeah, the county's struggled with this greatly, by the way. We, we can recommend, non-recommend, and we can make suggestions. And I think our chairman has made some suggestions.
Just, yeah, suggestion, please. Yeah, well put. Further discussion, questions, comments? Let's go for, please, Commissioner.
It'd be in the rear of the building fenced in instead of out in the parking lot.
It can be applicable. Well, I mean, they.
It would, wouldn't be seen if it's in the rear of the building fenced in. Like you're talking about the rental equipment and all that.
Yeah.
They should be fenced in, in the rear of the building.
You have to look at it individually on a site plan at that point, wouldn't we? But we'd have the, we'd still, even if we agreed on this, on that individual site plan, should ABC Company come in before us, we would have the ability to make that adjustment when we saw a site plan that lies within this PUD that's allowable. Is that correct?
Yes, and you did do something similar to this when you all approved the site plan for the original Ace Hardware that was going to be on the north side of town that is now, um, not going to come to fruition, but y'all did have some stipulations within that for the, the trailers that were supposed to be located within a fenced in area that the fence was high enough that you wouldn't have the. was high enough that you wouldn't have the visibility of the trailers.
Then we did it to Lowe's too, didn't we?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Yeah. Then we did it to Lowe's and Paddix as well, and it looks nice on a daily basis.
So how do we do that?
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Let's call for citizen comments. Any citizens wishing to make comment about this item on the agenda? Uh, please come on the microphone, name and address for the record. Seeing no citizen comments at this time, looking for a motion in regards to this item on the agenda. Since I've been Voicers, I'll make a motion for a positive recommendation, uh, with the suggestion, uh, or consideration, let me put it that way, that the BOC considers no trailers or eighteen wheeler trailers, uh, or containers, um, to be allowed in the parking lots. It's a motion and a second. All those, uh, in favor, uh, signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against? Abstentions? Is a positive recommendation. Next item up on our agenda is item 8B. Uh, this is also a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners is to review the amendment regarding off-site improvements to the Preliminary Master Development Plan PUD for Village at Pleasant Grove in Vintage Vines located off Pleasant Grove Road. Shane, Public Works?
Um, this is more so to update the PUD ordinance to reflect field conditions that have occurred as a result of the Central Pike widening project. With that, I'll hand it off to Todd.
Please, Todd.
Yeah. So the PUD was originally supposed to install a left turn lane and a signal at the intersection of Central Pike and Pleasant Grove Road. Because of the Central Pike Interchange Project, uh, our current and our former Public Works Directors, uh, they were working in, in tandem with the development, decided making them do that was lighting money on fire, relatively speaking, based on the work that they were going to have to come in and do. Instead, they came to agreement that they were going to take the money from the per lot contributions and apply it to the central, uh, sorry, to the Pleasant Grove Road widening project that'll come in, uh, a year or two after the Central Pike Interchange comes in. Uh, the development agreed to that. Um, quite frankly, it's, um, it's more of a benefit to the development itself. They also agreed to construct the full three lane section in front of their site, um, and as well as along the church frontage, but the church frontage is going to come out of their per lot contribution because realistically we just don't, you know, they've got two sections and then it would have been our responsibility in the middle. We're just essentially paying them to go do that for us all at once. Uh, and that's going to occur at the start of the second phase of this project. Uh, the first one is currently under construction.
That's right. Questions, comments? Yeah, makes perfect sense. Seeing no, uh, questions or comments, let's call for citizen comments in regards to this item on the agenda. Anyone wishing to make comment in regards to this item on the agenda? Please come on the microphone, name and address for the record. Seeing no citizen comments this time, looking for a recommendation in regards to this item on our agenda. It's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against? Abstentions? Is a positive recommendation. Next item up on our agenda, uh, falls underneath, uh, Preliminary Master Development Plan. It is a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners. It is to review the Preliminary Master Development Plan PUD for the Keel subdivision located at 115 Oakmont Drive. Mr. John?
Sir. All right. So we have a recommendation item, yes, correct, uh, to, uh, for PMDP overlay in a rezone. This is at the end of Oakmont Drive, just north of us here a little bit. North of Curd Road, uh, end of Oakmont Drive, it's kind of infill, really. Uh, there's an open space back here that they got 10.32 acres out of. They're asking for an RS20 PUD, so a medium density RS20 PUD. Medium density is the land use, uh, designation for this particular area. And on this map, you can see, we've got RS20 to the south, we've got RS10 to the east, RS10 to the north. So we have a higher density district circling this on, or hemming this in on the north and the east side. And to the south, we have RS20, medium density residential. To the west, along Oakmont Drive, we've got RS40. It's not a PUD, it's just straight zone. The applicant here is asking for RS20 base zoning, PUD overlay. The area requirement for a PUD is met, 10 acres is the minimum for an RS20 PUD. And this is 15, 15 single family lots. Um, you can see on the layout, some of our complaints. I like the idea that it's infill. I think some of the lots might have a, have issues with, uh, buildability on the, uh, size of the building envelope, which is ideal because there's no amenities proposed here. And I would recommend that if this gets a positive recommendation, that it move forward with the worst offending lots be removed and some amenities be approved. As of right now, it's 7% improved open space for a single family residential, correct? Still, yeah. PUD. So with that being said, that is pretty, it's pretty straightforward. That's all they're asking for. Um, client with land use, overall density is 1.33. RS20 allows up to 2.2 units acre. So this is well below the RS20 maximum you're allowed. Lot sizes are fairly decent sized. Um, it's not, uh, not quite as, not quite as large as the RS40 lots adjacent, but certainly on par with RS10. Um, let me see what else. Average, average lot size, 22,920 square feet. Uh, minimum is 11,087 square feet. So staff does recommend, if provided there isn't significant issues with Public Works, you know, analysis here. I know it is a dead end. Um, we had talked with them about potentially connecting to Curd, but I don't, I'm, let, maybe let Public Works speak about that. But I think if we can get rid of some of the littler, littler lots in here and get some type of amenity in here, um, it's not too, not too terrible. Um, not too bad. So planning recommends positive, provided everything with Public Works checks out as well. Um, but if you do positively forward it to the Board of Commissioners, we got the conditions. They're mostly just standard PUD, initial PUD establishment conditions, things like that. Um, also, this, this PMDP, if you compare it to our PMDP checklist, it includes everything that's included, that's needed. So there aren't, there aren't elevations at this time, but they aren't asking for any waivers. So it's going to have to be full masonry, whatever they put in there. And like I said, it's not, they're not required at PMDP to include the elevations. Of course, it could be requested, but they're not asking for any waivers. So the code is going to control it when the code states 100% masonry. So that's what they'll be held to. Um, and this is the part, this is the initiation of a PUD. So if there's waivers aren't asked for here, they, uh, they aren't, they aren't possible to be asked at a later, a later date. So the two waivers that they are asking are, now, Public Works, Lane, I'll let them speak on it. Um, yeah, that's, that's all I have on this, I think. Thanks.
Shane, Public Works?
Before I hand it off to Todd on roadway comments, I do want to mention that, uh, northern portion of the development, there are some lots that are, uh, affected by the floodplain, as long as they follow the condition we've laid out. I disregard the lot numbers, they weren't renumbered, but I did not update. But, uh, they will have to follow FEMA and TMA standards and along with floodplain ordinance on getting those lots permitted. Uh, condition number three, uh, the applicant will need to request sewer availability. I'm not concerned about capacity to serve the development, but I do have, as noted, I do have a preference that this development be served by gravity. It would require going through the Ocall HOA development to be served. Uh, and that would be the gravity option, like I said, which we prefer due to maintenance concerns with the alternative, which would be force manning grinder systems. Um, you can't avoid topographical challenges, that's understandable, use for, for grinders, but, um, in any instance, we try to promote gravity flow for our, for our lots of residents just due to the strain and, uh, maintenance responsibilities the city will have long term. And like I said, if topographical issues do exist, we do ask that any grinder installed in this subdivision, a subsequent redundant grinder be provided to the city for future maintenance. And all of the, all of the sewer will be publicable, maintaining it, you know, long term and within 20 foot easements. So I'll hand it off to Todd, Roadways.
All right. Todd, please.
Um, this one's pretty simple. They're asking for the cul-de-sac variances that we see pretty often here, uh, and that's for length and unit count. Starting with the unit count, they're proposing 16 additional homes on Oakmont. That put, would put the total at, uh, 28, so three over. Uh, so they're, they're right there, particularly with some of these lots where we're kind of questioning the ability to put a home on, right? So they're really right at target for units. The problem is length. Um, there, this is going to be a half mile long cul-de-sac by the end. Um, now, I, it is requested that they provided right of way, connecting to an adjacent parcel to perhaps get down to Curd Road eventually. Um, but we, we wouldn't have a timeframe on that. So we do have to treat this as if it's going to be a cul-de-sac indefinitely. Uh, and, and for reference, our, our code does call for a maximum length of 750 feet for cul-de-sacs, but admittedly, we've gotten pretty loose with that regulation. Yeah. That's all I got.
All right. Questions, comments from the commission? Commissioner Franklin?
Yeah, I had a question about this. It's a long right of way that, uh, this parcel to the north that comes down to Curd Road. I, I assume the only reason that parcels exist is because it's a big flag lot and it receives its, is, is it, is just going to maintain right of way off the new road?
Cemetery back there. There's actually, they're, and they're going to maintain that access. We've asked that they provide a parking spot. So if anybody wants to visit that cemetery.
I didn't know that was cemetery.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, they actually have that northwest corner.
I can't even, I mean.
I mean, I've looked and looked. Why, I don't understand why it's not on this.
It is.
Trees, yeah. Well, I, I got some more questions. Um, this, this could ultimately develop into a different, a completely different subdivision. Um, the way it's proposed, these are going to turn into permanent cul-de-sacs. Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, the southern cul-de-sac has the potential to be extended. If, uh, that, that lot that has the RS20 label on the specificity for it to develop, uh, we, we would extend it all the way down to her growth.
So the answer is no, it's not. If, if this were to happen as designed, it wouldn't be a permanent cul-de-sac. It'd be a temporary cul-de-sac. Okay. Um, that's, that's the answer. Um, let's see, what else? Is there not a minimum number of, um, percentage for amenity in a, in a residential PUD as required by our ordinance?
7%.
And what would 7% of this land mass be? Say?
Open space, yeah. Uh, it's not a 7% of the.
Improved, has to be improved?
Improved, yes. They can't include, uh, pension areas or anything like that.
And it shows, this shows zero.
Shows zero, but you know, like we were talking about those smaller lots, get rid of those, provide some amenity. Um, they're going to have to provide, provide the amenity now anyway. And the way it's laid out now, there isn't any space for it. Without getting rid of some, some lots.
Is, is the only reason it's coming in as a PUD, uh, instead of just a straight RS20 zoning? Because we can vary the cul-de-sac length without it going to Bose's? Is that it? I, I, if, if it's, if it's not really even a PUD, if it's got zero amenities, I mean.
Yeah, the only way to get the waiver is if they request it and it be a PUD, correct? Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner George, please.
Yeah, I shared sentiments with Commissioner Franklin about the, the cemetery easement. It brings up a question. I know we can't see, but I, I don't know where this parking spot for the cemetery is going to be.
They're going to have some work to do.
I, I, I really, I mean, I've got issues with lot 210, 203, even really 202. I mean, there's some of these that I just, I, I can't wrap my head around how you build a house on. And it just seems like, yeah, they're, they're coming in, I guess technically by right. They're coming in under, what, six homes, seven homes maybe, from what the max they could do. But, I mean, gosh, it feels like you're putting a lot in one area if you really think about it. So I just, I've got, got a lot of concerns with this. I wish, and I, Commissioner Franklin's, when they're coming because they need the cul-de-sac variances, but because it's a PUD, I think we've got a little bit, we've got an ability to have more of an opinion than if it was straight zoning where our hands would be tied. So, um, I don't think I'm going to be supporting this as it is today. I'd love to see it come back something better because this is not it.
Commissioner House, you have some comments as well?
So thank y'all for pointing out where the cemetery is because the whole time before this, I was looking at these lots and did even look up there and I didn't realize that access to it. So how big is this cemetery? Is it, does it list this down here somewhere? How many acres? How many, whatever?
No.
Okay. So who takes care of this, this cemetery?
Actually, we've done quite a bit of research, um, into this. I've spoke with the Tennessee Historical Commission, um, the State Historic Preservation Office. This is labeled as unnamed cemetery number 17 because they cannot locate any specific family members that are tied in with this cemetery. There have been notes where they said that some cities and counties have chosen to maintain these unnamed cemeteries if they do not want to deem the access and responsibility to the HOA. The city as a whole or as a standard has always required the HOAs to maintain these cemeteries, and that is the same as such with this. Um, one of the things is, under the State Historical Commission, um, the main thing is any adjacent properties that are developed, the cemetery cannot be touched, including the assigned access easements within 10 feet of any known grave. John and I are actually going to go out and look at this cemetery and do a little bit of walking around to try and see if we can help get some additional information to the Historical Commission with what they've requested. Um, they also state that it includes, you cannot run any vehicles through the cemetery to get from one flat to another. And typically a 30 foot buffer around the cemetery, um, is required for any extraneous graves, which is a likely possibility with this. So, uh, the state law typically says 10 feet, but the Historical Commission recommends 30 feet just because of hidden or unknown or, or, you know, with some of the grave sites that you don't have the headstones that they're showing. Um, they don't necessarily recommend cities taking these over, but he did give us some recommendations of some different cities that had done so. Um, so this is just something we're trying to figure out if there are any families. I've also done some research with some families I know that did live in the area, um, that they felt like that it's probably a, um, maybe a slave cemetery. Um, but there's still no information. We're through the Historical Commission. So we're going to try to go up there and see if we can find any headstones, get some additional information and partner with them on that.
I'd love to go one day when y'all go, if it's available. Many, many years ago, for those of you maybe who remember, Luke and I definitely remember, and I'll never forget when Luke and I went to that cemetery and there laid a, a, a woman with her children that died at birth from 1792 or some such. And then some of you know what happened to that situation. So ever since then, um, I, I just, I, I'm not going to vote for anything unless somebody's going to do something about this cemetery. There needs to be some kind of fence around it. It's not the responsibility of the city, it's the responsibility of the developer, whoever that is. There needs to be parking, it needs to be under HOA so that they maintain it. You and I live in the same subdivision, and I don't know if you realize that there's a cemetery in our subdivision. I have no clue, you know, who, nobody takes I have no clue, you know, who, nobody takes care of that. Of course, I wasn't on this board when that subdivision was was made as many years ago. Um, but uh, we we need to do, in my opinion, we need to do this. Uh, you're going to laugh at this, and it's okay. I don't care. I've walked to where they moved that cemetery and said, I'm sorry that this happened to y'all. Of course, nobody's going to listen to that. They don't hear me. But still, it bothered me so bad. And if wherever that that boundary is, Jill, there is something called a, if I get this right, from 1927 below, uh, before 1927, it might be 1937. Of course, they're not asking to move these, whoever the representative is out here. But, you know, you can hire someone to come. I think it's an anthropologist, maybe? Somebody, I may have that terminology wrong, to tell us where those graves are. Because I don't want any graves disturbed from building this stuff. So I don't know.
We have heard before where you can request for them to come out, possibly through um the Historical Commission to do lot R scanning of the ground area.
So they would do that for this development?
That or they do have a a joint effort with a company that can come out and do the lot R scanning of the area to see if there are any buried grave sites there without the the headstones or tombstones that are there. Um. Mr. Perry with Historical Commission has done a lot of research. We were back into September, we were looking into this. So it's not going to go um untouched. There is, as we have done with previous ones, and and I'm sure John has made within the recommendation of this, that they do maintain this cemetery, that it does have a decorative, low-maintenance fence around the area. It does have parking, even though we don't know who this family, this cemetery belongs to, we still want people to have the ability to come in. Because like you said, a lot of these scout troops will come in from town time to time as part of their projects and maintain or clean up these cemeteries. So we want to give that availability to that, but we also too would like to find the history behind this and honor those those families of those grave sites there. If there's anything we can do to get it on the Historical Commission as a named cemetery and find the history behind it as well.
Well, hopefully someone will step up that maybe has family there. But I can almost assure you that if someone's out there digging and they exhume a grave, then you're going to have a family member come because it's called a liability exposure. And um, it happens. It happens more often than you think. So a lot of these churches have coverage for that. Now, you wonder why I would know that, right? So um, it's very, very important, in my opinion. But we're going to have to have something about something about that. I can't, I can't do anything. I can't vote for this.
A couple of quick ones real quick, just to get in there, just uh, looking back at this, pretty fascinating that your current access to that cemetery is all the way from Curd Road. So you come from Curd all the way back in there. Uh, I too was unaware that uh that that was sitting back in there. Uh, reiterate Commissioner Giles' comments. Uh, that one, that that visit is honestly still stuck in my head. It was, it was, you could tell that at some point, uh, the one thing I learned from it is probably had some form of the plague or something because there are a lot of commonality uh in the headstones uh that laid there. Um, and it was not biased in age because children, um, men, women, both uh were there, but a lot of must have been some some bad years of something going on through that stretch. Just want to make a few comments should it uh move forward right here. Um. One is that amenities really don't bother me on this. It's the first time that I can recall that I've seen a half acre lot proposal uh on a single-family development in I don't know when. Uh, half acres allow you a little bit more discretion as a homeowner um to do pools, to do your own amenities, to have your own hardscapes out there. Uh, whereas the the 7,500, 10,000 square foot lots don't necessarily offer that and increase the heightens the necess necessity for amenities out there. Um, so it kind of leaves it, you know, uh, I think that's a a welcome opportunity to allow homeowners to purchase their land and not have the financial burden of of that uh HOA for something that they can put into their backyard. So half acre lots do allow you to do some of that and have that flexibility. I also agree with Commissioner George over here and staff. I think he made it the phase two lots out there uh present some very inherent challenges uh on how you place houses upon these lots. Uh, looking at your building envelopes, looking at uh maintaining your requested setbacks, uh, being able to get them house fits and and have them some marketable building plan uh presents its challenges. Therefore, I kind of feel like that this would be one that may never move to a phase two project. Um, because it is phased and actually that access easement uh that goes runs across this from Curd Road is a separation line for phase one to phase two. So should it move forward, I wanted to include the comment that no mass grading or whatnot be done in phase two uh until it's the intent to bring phase two online. Um, so that means no clearing, no uh erosion controls within phase two. Nothing be done. So that way, if it only develops out on phase one, uh, all these lots that you see in phase two aren't done until the intent is there to complete phase two and build out phase two. Um, because I think that they look at design, that that this design could change and uh be more appropriate. Uh, also within that, um, I only see the buffer going around the um, what would be the eastern corridor of it. Um, I think there's a staff comment that it says, it doesn't really say the depth of the buffer, uh, but want to maintain that buffer uh all the way around the existing neighborhoods there. Uh, so it'd be my request that the uh any natural vegetation or buffer um be defined and be undisturbed, and that including any uh erosion control measures or anything that should lie within uh that buffer, that there is no disturbance of that, that allows the homeowners of uh Oak Hall um to maintain a tree line and a natural buffer between them because those are full woods, uh particularly to the homeowners to the east of this neighborhood right there. Um. I think Shane, you'd mentioned this, that you'd prefer to maintain gravity and couldn't agree with you more. Uh, so they would have to go through the HOA of uh Oak Hall in order to get there, which there are no easements in place that would allow them to do that. So they'd have to negotiate and purchase that in order to do so.
That's my assumption, sir. Yes.
Perfect. Uh, just wanted to be clear about that. So most likely, should we approve, it would probably end up on what staff doesn't want would be grinder systems tapped into the sewer system out there. Uh, those unfamiliar grinders, uh, once they're accepted by the city, the city maintains and changes those. Uh, and it is an expense, uh, recurring expense back to the city. Uh, those are my comments toward it should it move forward.
I guess I can't wrap my head around the temporary cul-de-sac on the south, seeing as there's just one parcel to the south. There's already a house on it between the south and Curd Road. And and I know as a planning commission, we always want connectivity. I get it. Um, that we could all, maybe we could even use the easement off Curd Road as an emergency fire protection. But one thing that kind of bothers me about the planning process in general is when when you approve a neighborhood and it goes 30 or 40 years with a with a dead end. And it was a temporary cul-de-sac, but nobody knew it. It's just always the asphalt's there. It's a circle and you you use it every day. And then you find out, oh, no, this is just a temporary cul-de-sac. You've lived here for your whole life. And this can be a road through here and go on and connect to another road. And that, you know, that's, I don't know, it just, it upsets people and and it 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 changes the way they use their property. And I guess for me to support this or to vote positively, it it would have to make this a permanent cul-de-sac. I I mean, that's just a deal killer for me because what's going to happen is someday that could, I guess. I doubt very seriously if anybody can do a lot of development on this small lot between that and Curd Road. I mean, how many, how many lots could you get there? Maybe one more? I I mean, it's too little for a PUD. There's nothing that can really happen. It probably wouldn't happen anywhere, but it could. And if it did, some planning commission someday is going to make it go to Curd Road. And then that's going to completely change one of one of our older subdivisions. It's a really nice subdivision up there, especially, you know, the first homes. I mean, can you imagine if you lived in that neighborhood for your whole life and then all of a sudden you're cooking? And if you could connect this neighborhood to Curd Road, you know it's going to happen at 5 o'clock at night, right? That would be my deal killer on this one.
Just two comments on this one. One, because I've lived through it. Um, if if even if it's a temporary cul-de-sac, temporary, it could be for 20 years, there would still need to be sidewalk going all the way around. It would need to, they would need to have connectivity, even in the interim. Um, and the other end, um, the other comment's more procedural. Um. We we see these cul-de-sac variances all the time and some we approve, some we don't. Um, some we recommend, some we don't. Um. I I would just like to get a stronger stance on that from the engineering side of what's acceptable and what's not. Um, I I don't want to keep going down the slippery slope of saying, well, 1,500 is good. Well, 2,000 is good. Well, 2,500 is good. At what point do we say enough? And then at that, at that point, we're going to have a developer scream and foul because we approved the one for 1,700 feet and theirs is 1,800. But I just want to get, I'd like to see us tighten up a little bit more on that requirement or better define it.
Well, sir. Further questions, comments from the commission? Please.
I'll say I'm really torn on this because first of all, I'm happy to see something come in that's single-family homes. But I feel like they missed the mark here with you've got, starting with 67 square square foot lot down to an 11,000 square foot lot, where you've got these big, beautiful yards in the front part of this neighborhood that they could have continued with a lot fewer, larger lots and homes because let's face it, Mount Juliet does not have very many of those anymore. So, you know, you can incorporate in like that cemetery being there. You could take some of these other lots and combine them. And I mean, that may just be my opinion, but I feel like they missed a really good opportunity there.
Let's go ahead and uh ask for representation of this project. Uh, do we have representation of this project here? Please. Come to the microphone, name and address for the record.
I'm Hayden DeBerry with L. I. Smith and Associates out of Paris, Tennessee. Our address is 302 Fourth Cardboard, Cardboard Street in Paris.
You have a question?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giles.
So you see where the cemetery, where I was, we were shown where that that is.
Yes, sir.
And so you've got your your lots up there. So how did you know when you had this drawn where to put these lines?
We did a boundary survey on the place, a boundary and a topographic survey for their survey crew.
Okay, so and I guess what I'm trying to say is if those are, you know, very, very old graves, which they probably are, how do we know that there's not some own these lots?
I I'm not sure. Uh, we have tried to reach out to, well, we have talked uh over here with with them and and trying to find somebody to to reach out to them. And a lot of times you can go on the tax map and find a mail, uh, the mailing address. And of course, there isn't one. So really, there's nobody to reach out to um in regards to do anything. Um, but that's part of the reason we've left a separate subject here, but part of the reason we've left the the easement there. Wouldn't mind kind of moving that over to allow a little better access along that far west side. Of course, we can't reach out to nobody to to change that, you know, but um but to answer your question, I I I don't know.
I mean, so.
Name and address for the record if these are part of your group? How about name and address for the record?
Yeah, uh, my name is Mina Kiel. I'm at this uh 2401 McCann Court, Mount Juliet, Tennessee. So I did a lot of search about this cemetery. Before I bought the property, I talked to uh the lawyer. I bought it from the Wilson County. So I asked the lawyer, who is the owner for this cemetery? Um, what's the easement for? He told me it is your land, the you give the easement to the cemetery. So it is considered my land. The easement, we provide this easement to the cemetery, okay? Uh, after I make the purchase, I hire lawyer and I hire tighter company to try to um know who's the owner, who we need to talk to. Um, we're not able to find any result. I make a lot of search to lawyer working, try to communicate with anyone, but we're not able to find any result. We tried to move this easement somehow somewhere to be able to make the size of the lots better and equal. But we're not able to locate the owner of the uh cemetery and we're not able to change the way how the easement crossing the land. Um, so that's why we have to come up with this drawing. Uh, about them cemetery, I I went multiple time walking on the forest, tried to locate the cemetery multiple time, but I'm not able to locate anything. It's just heavy forest. You're not even able to walk. I get uh hurt a lot. You walk between the trees, forest, just forest. I was not, you were not even able to go. Of course. So I make a lot of search. I I tried to walk on it to locate it or find anything, but I'm not able to find anything. Uh, so it is just forest. I know for sure 99%, there is no bodies in this cemetery. It just lived like that for many years, for decades. It was, but, okay, it's, okay, um, you can do your own search, but I'm not able to find any result. I'm not, I didn't find any result. I tried to walk by myself multiple time. I didn't, I just forest.
Well, I think what the city staff was talking about doing with the uh, the, what'd you say, not historical, but what, was that what you said? Yeah, they can do some kind of of light scan, for better words, with maybe in 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 conjunction, connection with you to to try to come up if there was anything. Obviously, there could be some that would be so old, there would be no, even anthropologists couldn't find it. They have to sift through and see if there's any bone and see if there's any metal from people.
I can work with.
But I don't, that's not what we're getting the case in. I think they can, they're they would be able to see maybe, you know, from the movement down into the, however they do that. I don't even like to think about. But at any rate, um, I think this is 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 something that's going to have to be done because if it's that old, we we just don't, we just don't know. People don't know. Back then, they used wood. They used wood crosses and people's names on it, wood planks and some of the, and then it gets hit by something. And then you know, um, the, I I just.
It's in a flood zone.
Yeah. Oh, and I didn't realize that either.
Yep.
Well, anyway, I don't know. It's it's a challenge. I mean, it's a challenge. I love the single-family homes, though. And I love what you said about it, too. That was, you know, we need more of that. Um. So anyway, I don't, I don't know. It's a challenge.
Yeah, regarding getting somebody out there to come do the the study uh for remains, um, you know, what typically, you know, who who would be the owner of this property, you know, like as far as would there be maybe a problem with trespassing of some sort? Like, would it is, is that? You know, kind of get at, I really don't know.
I think that's a legal question. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not for sure.
To if it is a family cemetery, the ownership reverts back to said family. But at this time, they have no documented family under this cemetery. But I was looking, the access easement was granted in 1957 at county. Um, and this is a farm that has been deeded over that I can see three times that goes back into the early 1920s from the research that we've done. So I will be happy to connect you with Mr. Perry at the Historical Preservation Committee with the state, and he probably can give you some connections in order for us to get further documentation for that cemetery so we can make sure that it is properly honored and maintained.
Yeah, let me ask you a quick question right here. You've you've heard several comments amongst the commission tonight. Obviously, you've heard staff comments as well. Both planning and public work. Sounds like there's a you know, we don't understand how you're going to be able to do this, some lot fits. Uh, you've heard comments on cul-de-sacs, you've heard comments on how you're going to get sewers. Cities obviously would prefer to keep you on gravity uh right here. Uh, we've obviously heard a lot of comments via the commission itself. This be something that you prefer to request a at least a 30-day deferral to get some of this homework in, be able to bring This be something that you prefer to request a, at least a 30-day deferral to get some of this homework in, be able to bring this back to the commission with some of these substantial answers that you have or that you've heard tonight, some of the concerns from staff, some of the concerns from the planning commission as well. Just maybe dot some i's and cross some t's in the next 30 days. If, if you should request a deferral, this puts you forward on our December agenda is, is what that does automatically. I guess, how many times are they able to defer? I mean, if technically needed more time, you can do it twice. Is that correct?
I, I don't remember what.
I don't remember what that is either. But at least give you 30 days. There's quite a bit of concerns up here. And, and you've heard, you know, quite a bit. It sounds like the cemetery being one of the, you know, kind of a hot button. Yeah, I know that you get a difficult task ahead of you.
Yeah. For the first time.
They would have to actually probably ask our city attorney how long they could, whether or not you can request an indefinite deferral. That way you wouldn't have to pay the fees again or whether it had to be.
Really, the only problem, the thing that will take the longest is going to be the cemetery. The rest of it, we can handle within 30 days, but.
That just helps y'all out in my opinion. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so and, and we would allow you to, to work with staff on how long that, that your deferral should be requested, should you wish to go in that direction. I can't really give you advice or, or, or whatnot or, or say that you should, but you've heard a lot of expressed concerns in regards to this.
Yeah, Lena here, Lena, he's the owner.
Sure.
I don't know. Are you wanting to make that?
You can get like positive feedback and you can work on the other stuff, other communities.
I can't tell you right now that you're going to get a positive recommendation or a negative recommendation. I'm just saying you've heard of the abundance of been concerns in regards to multiple issues lie within your site as yours proposed here. So I can't give you an indication of how the vote would go. I can say that if it goes negative from us and then it goes negative back at the board of commissioners as well, it's what, a year or two years before they can bring a project, one year? So if you got negative from us and then negative at the board of commissioners as well, you're basically stopped for a year at that point. So it would be your personal choice.
That's our plan is to build my single family homes. I don't like small lots.
Yeah.
I'm planning to build, I want to make big lots, nice lots. So that's my goal and that's fine. I think take this is okay with us there?
Okay, okay. It's, it's, it, it, this would be up to you, but you can, you can defer it indefinitely and then you can work on, I think the major thing is the cemetery. It's not really the lot thing, but you can combine some of those lots and that kind of thing. Because this is obviously November the 20th and, and it's starting into the holidays and, and some of these people are going to be traveling and a bunch of stuff. It's going to really limit your, your availability from these people. So I'm just trying to help you. I would, because indefinitely and you could bring it back in February or January, even if you had to, or March or whatever. I'm, I'm just.
Can we ask for take a day for now and if we feel like we need more time, we can let them know?
You may. John?
I'd like to clarify that question. So the planning commission cannot defer it, but you may ask, yes.
Correct.
Okay, can we ask for take a days and if we need more time, I will let them know?
I would just do it indefinitely one and then they can choose when to come back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's if, if you wanted to request and then is that a request for indefinite deferral, then you're going to communicate with staff when you're wanting to come back?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to accept that as a request for an indefinite defer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate you guys.
Please, before we go to the next.
Really just quickly, just an ask if you could work in lockstep with them on this as close as you can because I've got some concerns. When we've got a property that's deeded as a cemetery and I've got, we've got a property owner that says he's almost 99% sure there's no bodies. It gives me 100% certainty that I don't trust them doing it by themselves. So if someone in the city could please just, in lockstep with them because I, I just, hearing that just makes me feel very uncomfortable about them independently doing this process by themselves. That would be my ask.
We'll be happy to. That's one reason that we did do a lot of detailed research and have involved the state historical commission because,
Thank you.
as I said, we want to make sure they're honored there.
I appreciate that.
All right. So I want to make a comment because I'm sure that a lot of you all are probably out here for this, oh, call development. So I don't want to feel like that, that, that's kind of left you guys hanging out there. So as of this moment, that's a 30-day request for deferral. So, well, it's indefinite at this moment. Yeah, he, he applicant.
Yeah, but he corrected him though and he said yes on the indefinite.
So what I would encourage you all to do on that with the deferral because it could be 30 days, it could be six months, it could be three, four months. We, we don't know. We're not the applicant here. Normal staff have that answer for you. Our agendas for our planning commission are available on the website one week prior to the planning commission meeting. And so you would be able to see the applicant applying again. You're going to see as we move forward here, some, we're reviewing a zoning ordinance regarding some notifications out there. Unfortunately, on this one, there's not going to be any additional notification requirements out there. So you'd have to follow the agenda for the planning commission. We meet the third Thursday of every single month. Tonight, we approved our planning commission calendar for next year. So if you wanted to follow it, I would encourage you to follow whether or not you're following for this item or not because it's very good information out there about what is coming into the city of Mount Juliet, also what comes within our urban growth boundary out there, not only within the city limits. So it's kind of some fun facts for, for you to stay up to, to date on your, what's happening in the city out there. But as far as I'm aware, Sam, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are no notifications that would happen. And that's probably the best course from a citizen's standpoint to be able to follow, to see when this is, of course, you can call and ask staff as well. But the agenda does go on the city's website one week prior to each meeting, which is the third Thursday. So the second Thursday of every month is when we publish our agenda out there.
Depending on if this zoning ordinance amendment does pass,
Okay.
the timing could work out right where it does end up being a sign out there, but I definitely wouldn't depend on it at this point.
Okay, yeah, that's a good point. We're, we're trying to get out there. I know that, I think this is sponsored by the city and another, and maybe the board of commissioners or a member of the board of commissioners. We're trying to do more out there to make sure that adjacent property owners, citizens as a whole are aware of what's happening through, through increased signs, increased certified mail notifications, things out there such as that. So one of the things we're hearing later in the agenda is hopefully addressing some of that out there. I wish I could say there was a better way that you would be notified out there. That's the best nickel's worth of advice that I can give you to kind of follow when it comes back out there. I personally have one of my closest and nearest and dearest friends that abuts this property. So when I see it, I know I'll let her know. But unfortunately, I don't know all of you guys here in the crowd. So kind of follow it that way. Staff is super accessible and always willing to take calls, answer emails or whatnot out there. So you've got some good people here working for you all within the city. So I know you guys wanted to hear a little bit more about it, but it is deferred at this time. Sam, anything you wish to input on that?
Yeah.
Very well. Thank you all. If you did come for that, Commissioner Franklin.
Yeah, I would just like to ask staff, and I don't know if it's possible, but this could be an opportunity to get this cemetery fixed.
Yeah.
And, you know, it might be hard. It might be a little legal leg, leg work. It may not be possible. But if it is, I would certainly hope we might use this. This could be a blessing. I mean, you know, could be.
Yep. Yeah, without a doubt. Very well. Let's move on with the remainder of our agenda tonight. The next item up on our agenda falls underneath zoning ordinance amendments. We'll begin with item 10A, his recommendation on back to the board of commissioners. His review of the zoning ordinance amendment to section 9-106 regarding access management. Shane, over quarks.
Go ahead.
We didn't propose this. Oh, it came from the city attorney's office.
Anybody want to speak on it?
This amendment was sponsored by Commissioner Giles and Commissioner Malley at the board of commissioners.
You want to speak on it?
Commissioner Malley was, was the one and I did co-sponsor it. And so there have been quite a few, quite a bit of confusion on, on when you develop something that was recently something developed here in the city and the owner had to go through a lot of things that he shouldn't have had to go through. Just because of the wording, it was under, it was not understood. It was, it was just, it was just not clear. And so it's just been, some of the areas have been rewritten so that anybody should be able to understand what it is. So if you have somebody in California that wants to look at our zoning code and say, okay, well, we may come down there and do something, they can read this and they don't understand, and they can understand it. And so they don't have to go next door and get somebody to sign off on something for them to develop their piece of property. You know, it's things like that. So it went for the commission and it was unanimous voting on it. So.
Perfect. I, I got just a few small comments then. Just maybe you guys consider, maybe you didn't. One of the things that, that jumped out at me, because this is not, this is overall not commercial or residential, it's going to really grab both. Like in section five, talking about the construction and maintenance. This is, these are kind of what-if scenarios. What if it is residential? You know, who is, who is paying? It's saying that both parties are paying for that. So if it's turned over to an HOA, you're basically saying that an HOA and the way that it's worded here, that they have to share equal financial responsibility in that. So you're putting that burden upon a potential HOA to share in that because this property connects to this property. So Luke wants to connect to Art's property. And if I do, Art, whether you like it or not, if it's there, you got to pay for it too. You get fiduciary responsibility to me as well.
But they, the HOA should do that. The problem in the past is, is that that stub should be as close as it possibly can to the line. And then that connection should be the, the financial responsibility of both parties who owns those pieces of property. So if that's two HOAs, it's two HOAs. That's a one-time occurring and it's just the maintenance of the road that would be whoever that is. And if it's HOA, it's HOA and it's their street.
But if you're talking, and I'm just saying, if you're at some connection points, I mean, you could be talking half million dollars. I mean, being the drop of a bucket, easy. And you're, I mean, I don't know any HOA that all of a sudden gets excited about a $250,000 check or half million or check to connect to a neighborhood that they probably don't want.
But the way it was written, they have to go get the permission of that subdivision to do it. And the way that this is written now is that if there was a connection up to it, they can't make that person connect to it.
Right.
So it takes care of that.
Yeah, but if it's there and it's, let's just say it's never done on this side. So I'm going to use one of the more popular ones. I'll use Dr. Franklin's office. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll use those two there. And, and Dr. Paray's building over there with that is that there's a easement that we required across the front. Dr. Paray don't want it over there on his. And so should that connection want to, Dr. Paray would have to help him pay for it. All I'm saying is, is that the way this is written right now, that particularly for residential, more applicable in my opinion than commercial, but you're putting financial responsibility and burdens potentially on people or groups of people that may not be aware of it. So should somebody want to make that connection, which we've granted from both sides as an easement or whatnot, it should be this cat right here, the new guy that is wanting to make the connection, his financial responsibility to, to take, we just looked at a temporary cul-de-sac, tear that cul-de-sac back out, make that just a single lane road, complete the sidewalks that we just said we wanted to go all the way around it. I mean, that's a huge expense. So I, I mean, we're putting it on an HOA to thank for that.
Well, going back to the illustration that you just used, I'd say that doctor whomever, if that doctor didn't want it, then there wouldn't be a, if that should have been done by the planning commission years ago, that was the city's fault for not maintaining, for not doing that. Let's call it the way it is. They won the lawsuit.
Yeah.
So my understanding. Well, whatever. I mean, that was.
Yeah.
Well, of course, this was before.
It's still your fault.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that was before my time. But at any rate, to get back to yours, if you're not careful, then someone could, could not do that knowing that the, that there's going to be, there's, there's going to be some kind of new construction development coming to, to put that expense on someone else. And that's not fair either. So that's why it's written the way it's written.
And I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand, understand.
That it's going to be equally shared expense. And so at some point, that HOA on the other side of the person making the connection is going to have the damn stroke of that check. It's going to be a big check. Sam?
I won't comment on the financial part of it, but the residential part of it, normally you wouldn't, this wouldn't apply to residential because those are public streets. So those don't involve easements. They're just being connected. This is commercial development. So Sprout can connect to the physician's plaza. That's where this is coming into play, not residential.
But they wouldn't have to follow this on a residential to potential connectors?
We don't need easements for public roadways. They just connect.
So we just need to pay attention if they're private roadways?
Correct.
Yeah, to kind of follow up, we, for temporary cul-de-sacs, we require them to dedicate the right of way all the way. So the adjacent property owner is us.
Okay.
And really it's just a condition of approval for the incoming residential, tear out the cul-de-sac, connect to it. And that's, it, it's no different than when we ask them to connect to a existing street perpendicular.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm a big fan of it and, and like it. I'm just kind of one of those things. I'm looking for potential unintended consequences of what we do. And that, that was kind of one of my fears there. My, I wrote a suggestion right here, just, I say maybe a provision that caps the timeframe on the shared costs out there. You know, where they're designed to connect. This one's turned over, whether or not commercially or whatnot. That, I don't know, just seems unfair that if I've bought a property, I've owned it for 20 years, it does show a stub out there and all of a sudden Art wants to connect his property to mine, let's just say commercially right there as well, that all of a sudden, hey, he's going to make the connection to me finally. Oh, and then by the way, I have to absorb half of its cost to do it.
No, it's not his cost. It would be the cost on his side. It would be the connection to it. If they didn't put the stub up because this commission didn't, didn't require them to, sorry, that's your all's fault. He should have pulled it up there. But if it's been up there, you're not talking about a whole lot of space.
This says when both, well, I know.
You see what I'm saying? It's not. And like, like a lot of times you put it on the plaque, whether, and it, and it specifies that on there. That if, if it's either, it's either stubbed out or it's on the plaque that it will be. You know, like for example, I know one, one plaque that says they will give cross-access when they get access to a lot. And it's possible that it will come.
Yeah.
Because there's no other reason to, see? So it's on the plaque. There's cross-access up there. That's the responsibility of that owner up to the line.
But if that owner gets that cross-access and so that he can get to the, to the light and that financial burden is put upon this lot that's making the cross-access connection of the, of installing the light, does he
No, has nothing to do with installing the light.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just using an example. Yeah.
I mean, you see what I'm, yeah, I'm just saying.
Giving approval down the road for future connection is different from having a financial burden tied to that approval.
Yeah.
I think that's where everybody's coming from here.
Yeah.
Is I'll give you approval all day long, but 10 years down the road, you ask me to pay for it. That's a different story. If you want to pay for it to make that connection, that's your business.
Yeah. That's all I'm saying is because the way it's written, it says right here, says both those can be connected. It is the financial responsibility of each owner to pay for their property portion of the connection.
If it's connected. If it's connected.
It doesn't say an if. And property shall not be subdivided to avoid this requirement. There's no if in it. It is saying that if we decide to connect, it's happening and you're sharing the cost. Yes, sir. So I'm just looking at unintended consequence. That's all I'm saying. That could be a very unintended consequence and a burden.
Well, it, it is at our place to dictate financial responsibility between two properties. Can retroactively, there's only one, there's only a few entities in state that allow to retroactively cause access. And, and that's through eminent domain. And you know, even the RTA, the Regional Transportation Authority doesn't have eminent domain. And a private property owner can't be compelled to force a private property owner to even connect. And we, and after it's developed, we don't have any authority other than using our power of eminent domain and then turn it over to a developer with which that looks really, really good.
Right.
Nobody wants to even do that. So I, I, this is, I think, I'm in, I'm in favor of it because I think it, I don't think this was, I don't think this was enforceable. I think we were trying to get developers and one private, we were trying to make private people compel other private people to do things they don't have any authority to do. I think that's what they're trying to do here. Am I getting this right? Is that the, is it because crossing out some of this cross access corridors in number two? I, if you leave them in here, I don't, just don't see how you can make that happen. I mean, let me just tell you something. I've lived here a long time and we've got some very, very sharp private owners. And they are the king of spite strips and they are the king and queens of figuring out how to buy property that they want to continue, especially property next door to them. You know, they don't want the value of to go up. So they're not going to, you know what I'm saying? So, so how do we legislate one private property owner to make another private property owner connect or do something on behalf so they can develop? Cause that property owner probably doesn't want them to develop because they probably rather have that property and develop themselves. We have a lot of that around here. Right?
I think Sam brought up with the Sprouts and the Physicians Plaza. That's more than one owner. That's what? Four, five owners if my memory?
A Physicians Plaza?
Physicians Plaza connecting to Sprouts. It's more than one.
Yeah, it's four or five.
Yeah. So you take that and then you multiply it. It's not just two people at that point. Then you've got a bigger mess because you've got.
Residentially, I.
Yeah.
Inverse condemnation lawsuits are not fun. You have to pay their legal fee and.
I won't allow Commissioner Rast just made a good point. Do you want to share that?
I think it's good. I think what's written here is fine. I, I got one question that I'm going to ask City Attorney down. But I think in that sentence, in, I've been, I guess, item five. If we just struck where it says when both steps can be connected is the financial responsibility of each owner to pay the property, their property portion of the connection. If we just strike that, the rest reads just fine. And then my question to City Attorney is, can we dictate who pays for what? Is that within our legal boundaries to do that?
This was a sentence, I believe that Commissioner Malley added. No, I would not recommend that. No.
I, I think if we just strike the reference to financial responsibility, I think I could get behind this.
Let me ask you something, Dean. If we take that out of there, so who is going to pay for it?
You know, they both can, one's like, yeah, that's their, but it's not ours.
You know, a lot of these things that we get out of developers are volunteers.
Yeah, but.
When we hold a site plan over somebody's head approval and, and they say they're going to give us 30 feet of right of way, we make them.
If you've got, if you've got a large commercial property.
And you tell a developer that there's a quarter of a million dollars standing in between you and developing this property. I think they'll come up with the money pretty quickly. I think that's what it boils down to. And if for some reason their neighboring property is nice enough or kind enough to pitch some money in, then good for them. But I don't think it's, it's our job to, to play referee and make people pay.
Well, here's an example that came up here in the city about this. Over on another area, because of the, the, the contour of the land, the slope of the land, if they didn't bring that, if they wasn't required to bring that up to the line, they bought that property and developed it knowing that someday they put the cross access there. Except they didn't bring it up to the line, whoever buys that property is going to have to either bring their property up to match it or go over there and bring their property down. So in actuality, they should have brought their property down initially to connect to that. But because they didn't, because exactly what you said about, about this, then they're putting the burden on someone else that may not be able to do that. And they're just waiting to be able to acquire that piece of property.
Well, but then they should have developed first. Now, that's a bad way to say it.
But it's, it's private ownership.
Yeah.
It's already owned, already approved and already recorded at the registered deeds. And you're, you're getting into that. It's not, they're not volunteering it. You're, you're asking, you're, we are, it's inverse condemnation, folks. I mean, any other way, I'm, hey, I got electrocuted worse than anybody in here with this. I'm telling you, it's a bad lawsuit to lose. And I, I just don't think you can compel it. I think you brought up a good point.
We have one more suggestion since I'm starting to thought this would be hard. Just on number six, it says the city may waive or modify joint use driveways or cross access corridors. My recommendation would be that, that the city is a little bit of a broad comment for something of that kind of action. That that should read the Board of Commissioners. I would specify or the Planning Commission, whomever you guys would deem acceptable to make that kind of a decision. But a waiver or a modification of these sorts shouldn't just fall upon a broad term such as the city because those could be some major waivers or modifications that technically, you know, an employee of Public Works could say, that's great. He's the city.
It's probably worded like that because it would depend on what type of plan, I guess it is. I mean, if it came in as a PUD and now we're amending the PUD, it has to go through all of the normal steps to amend it. If it fits within the parameters that staff is allowed to fix things, then it would just fall there. So.
Yeah. Or, or I'd even be a fan of saying the city attorney, but I'm just saying to specify something. Yeah, exactly. To, to just specify where it's going. Who's gonna, who's gonna make this decision? Cause somebody needs to make this decision. And who is going to make that decision? I think the term city is for as significant of a waiver and a modification as this could turn into, that I think the term city is, I mean, John, you're going to come to John, John. I mean, I'd say nope. Go Shane or Matt or Todd, I'm going to say, not going to follow me. I'm not going to do that. I don't want to take the responsibility for that. So I would just suggest that to be, you know, Board of Commissioners or, uh, your Planning Committee, whomever it is. But I just think the word city is a little bit too broad for something as significant as approving a waiver or a modification or something. That'd be my only other comment.
Going back up on number five, where it says can be connected, another word that could be used there are connected. And then it's not can be, it's are. And that's when the decision of the city says y'all need to connect it. Then the financial responsibility falls on both property owners, wherever it is. Instead of can be, it could, a word could be put there are. Because it may not be ever connected.
Yeah, it's still a problem with dictating financial responsibility. They, they're, they're big boys, they're developers. If they want to connect, they'll find a way to do it. They'll find the money to do it. Especially if they're both coming at the same time, we can hit the both of the flats and say, yeah, you, we can provide stuff to the property line. But if there's one existing there and someone's coming in to develop property next door, that's your dime, buddy. We're, we're not going to say, you, you already built your property. You're a business owner that owns that property. Oh yeah. By the way, this guy wants to come in now and you got to share the responsibility with connection. Hell no. I wouldn't do it.
I've built a house where I've had somebody that they should have cut their lot on the side and didn't and put a major financial burden, but on developing a lot adjacent to them. But it is what it is. We had to play the card we were dealt to make it work. So if you got that high-low scenario out there, I just, you know, a person that we did the work for knew it was there when they got it and came to meet it, you know, kind of one of those things. But just a suggestion, because I know this is a recommendation item back, but there's some loopholes in here that I think that you guys could probably close. Shane, please.
So my big concern with, with number five as written, essentially every stub we currently have is void. Cause no property owner is going to pay to carry that stub if it wasn't brought to the property line, even if the easement was given. And we, we lose the ability to enforce cross connectivity if that stub wasn't carried to the property line. Quite frankly, I'm not sure we can even construct stubs to the property line just with the limitations of how far a paver can go without crossing the line. Now I do absolutely agree that we do need to be better defining. Like what, what occurred that brought this up absolutely shouldn't happen. However, I, I, I think that clause as written absolutely takes all enforceability out of our hands.
Good point. Very, very good. And that's just, we'd looked at, I remember years ago, we looked at something within the sign ordinance because of these, um, neon lights in the windows that were so bright. And we were about to pass a sign ordinance that didn't allow you, it was going to cover you. We go, had to take those neon lights out of your windows. But the unintended consequence of passing that also meant that your mom and pops, which I'm going to call the stretch, uh, on, uh, Lebanon Road, at North Mount Juliet Road. You know, you got just a string of, uh, in the, in the Jones buildings up there of small retailers, mom and pops, every one of those would have had to pull their signs, other windows, open, close, those kinds of things. So just kind of looking at what could be great intent, great suggestion. Uh, but what could be unintended consequences of fixing something? And these are, I see them as possible consequences or unintended consequences of such. So that's the reason why I wanted to bring them forward. Yeah.
Cause we've seen some circumstances, if it's not rewritten, that's the thing about.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's a, it's a tough one, but yeah, we can make a recommendation here. Momentary, everybody give it on discussion. Perfect. Let's go ahead and call for citizen comments. Got to do that to make it official. Name and address for the record.
Bill Robinson, 1400 North Mount Juliet Road, Mount Juliet, Tennessee. Uh, I'm the subject of, of the problem here. When we developed Sprouts, we were asked to connect to the property next door, which we did. And we were going to, and then we were told, uh, by the city attorney that we had to have a reciprocal agreement. Well, when women, the five owners of that, which turned out they didn't have a property owners association or anything. They had, their LLC had gone debunked. I worked for eight months. I couldn't force them. We were willing, we went ahead and spent the 15 or 20 grand to connect to them, put the sidewalks in and the handicaps in. So the money wasn't the issue with us. It was being able to follow the guidelines of the city. We were told that you couldn't even have, we shouldn't even been issued a permit for Everett Downs because we didn't have a reciprocal easement before we bought the land. Which is, is you cannot force, uh, we all know, I could name some property owners from Mount Juliet. I've been out here over 50 years. We all know property owners in Mount Juliet wouldn't sign an easement if their life depended on it because they've got a farm and, and I'm, let's say you're developing Green Hills next door to a farm. And you say, okay, we've got a beautiful development. Everybody likes it. The commission, the BOC, the planning commission. And you get up there and you say, okay, we've got one access to us, to a farm here. And this farmer says, hey, I got cows over here and I'm not going to give you an access. You know, my kids are going to have this farm and everybody wants it. But you've agreed to pave to the property line and you're saying now we can't have this development, the Green Hills Mall. Because you can't make a property owner do it. I, property owner signed an easement. I think that in a, in a, in a court of law, that would be inverse condemnation. I've been told by some constitutional attorneys that, that this is not legal. Of course, we didn't have, we had a development under roof. We couldn't go to court and, and be three years down the road. But I don't know what this wording needs to be, but it needs to say, if the developer is trying to get to the property next door and is perfectly willing to do it, I don't think you should force that developer to make an independent private citizen sign an easement before he can get his development approved. And that's what your current ordinance says. And it's, it's ridiculous to me and it's never been enforced before. We've got 50 of these situations out there right now. So the attorney is going to be awful busy if the city doesn't turn, change this because they're going to have to file 40 or 50 lawsuits to make all these people sign reciprocal easements. Is the way it's written today. So those are all my comments. I just wanted to make the point. It took me eight months and we had to got down to legal action, we, everything, just to try to get these people on board. And it was, and I don't have a dog in the fight now. We're, we're, we've got it signed and we found out that they were under the same ordinance I did and, uh, and they had to comply with city ordinance. But we could have, uh, you know, said, hey, y'all bring the road on up because they were required to. The city just didn't make them to it. But we went ahead and, and put the, connected and, and opened up the first Sprouts. But I just want to make sure it's not fair for other people to, to force people to sign easements. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
And the way this is written, see, is that if they can put the, 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 the access on the actual plant because it may never develop over there. So that person, it's up there. But then if it does, it's that person, because that person chose 20 years before not to bring it up there and, and thinking, okay, if it ever does, then I will, then I'm responsible for doing that. That's what this is trying to get across. And we have selectively enforced something on someone that we hadn't before. But yet we've got someone out here that cares enough about the city that didn't bring a suit against us. So, you know, I, I commend Commissioner Malley for taking this on and, and what little I did to help. She was the one who did this and I commend her for it. It does fix the problem.
Pass and this fixes this problem?
Yes, that problem was taken a little bit out of context, but yes.
Well, I, I guess just out of curiosity, because we do approve a lot of things with crossing the connectivity or connectivity to adjacent properties. I've not done or been involved in any type of that development or style of development where I can speak firsthand. But if we're showing connectivity to an adjacent property, why do we not have in our subdivision regulations that requires them to take their road or their, what we have approved here to the edge of their property line?
I think that's what we're trying to add here.
Okay. Yeah, it does that too. Or if you go look at.
So it's kind of on us for letting somebody stand short.
If you go look at recorded plaits, which I did before the Oakmont thing, because I want to find out if it was a temporary permanent cul-de-sac. And the way it was platted is the road right of way went right to the edge of the property. So it's the plat, the recorded plat that determines really whether or not it's a temporary cul-de-sac. You know, it all looks like a circle of asphalt, but I mean, on the plat, plat doesn't match the, you know, what's on the ground. you know, what's on the ground. So that's how, as far as I know, we've been doing that for years, right? And if we're plating it all the way to the property's edge, then then it's there, right?
And it's not somebody else's responsibility to go across on them and do it. It's their responsibility to bring it up.
I thought I thought this problem was solved.
I thought this took care of it. So I don't know.
If you guys think this will fix it, I'll certainly vote for it because, you know, developers raise money, you know, that's what they do. They're money racers. They borrow money, they go out and try to put something together and try to make return. And man alive, I mean, you can, you, we could have lost sprouts over this.
Yeah, I mean, look at the tax, this has already brought in the taxes for us here in the city. When it was open, it could have been open before then. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Interesting. I definitely see your issue. So let's, I guess, make a motion. Let's, yeah, ask for a recommendation regards this item on the agenda.
I got one more, sorry.
No, please. Forgot about that.
In item three, I just want some clarification on what that means. It's understood that the new development will not be required to get the adjoining property owner to sign any document to provide access. Does that mean it's there, I'm using it, I'm connecting whether you want it or not? Is that what that says?
This part was written by Commissioner Malley, I believe. But I think the intent is that in the case of not an old development already being in place, so one development's coming in and it's undeveloped on each side, they will have to provide an access easement for the other side should it develop to be able to come on to to cross over to their property. Then, when the new development, if it does come, then they would also provide cross access. And now we essentially have flow in both ways. But again, this is only in areas where the city has decided that it's a cross access corridor. This isn't all the time.
Right.
This is just in cases where we want cross access.
And that'd have to be executed at final plat?
It would be on the plat and then also by instrument.
Great.
Yeah.
Is this verbiage, are you going to straighten the verbiage up? Or or is this verbiage acceptable?
That Commissioner Malley wants.
Is it enforceable? I I can't get behind this without it being reworded, plain and simple.
I think we're setting us up for lawsuits.
Taking care of, hopefully not getting a lawsuit.
And you can have unintended consequences, kind of fix one problem and create another one.
Well, it's something.
Isn't recommended to work. Is done. Is it worse to leave it the way it is, is the question? I mean, it's a choice. It may not be perfect, but is it a step in the right direction? And does does it heal a wound if not cure the patient here? I don't, I mean.
Here's the thought. I think it's a step. But I think that its current form is not something I can get behind. I think with legal counsel advice and reworking of the wording, it is something we could get behind. It's something that could be valuable. But the way it's written, we've reviewed other things like this before, where the wording just wasn't quite right. And we had to go back and redo it.
And I think to Commissioner Rast's point, there's not a single person on the Board of Commissioners that's an attorney. And that's why we have a city attorney. And I think Commissioner Malley might have had the best intentions here. But I think at the end of the day, that's why we have a city attorney on payroll, is to take an idea and make it, close loopholes, look at unintended consequences and make it the best it possibly can be. And I think right here is a prime example of we are not using the resources that we have at the city. I I just, I would just like, and that that's the part that kept striking me is as we asked questions about this, it's, well, this is how the commissioner wrote it. This is how the commissioner wanted it. It's like, well, I I would much rather sit here and have the city attorney say, I got an idea, I worked with the commissioner on it, and I'm good with this. And I have not heard that sentence at all tonight. And that brings a lot of concern. Because why, why do we have, why do we have taxpayer dollars go into a city attorney that has the skill and talent to do her job and we're not using her? Like that's, I just, that's the part that that's just, I can't wrap my head around.
Mr. George?
Yeah. Do you have a lot of opposition against the wording in this document?
I had opposition to certain sections, yes.
Okay. And that could be, that could be reviewed with Malley and myself and then brought to the Board of Commissioners?
Yes.
Okay.
And I guess that's my concern. I don't want to chime in again. And I don't want to put the city attorney in an awkward spot. But if we have a city attorney that behind the scenes before this comes to us says, I have concerns, and this is still coming before us with concerns, that's a problem to me. That that's why we have staff. That's why we have staff that works on the plats, and we have public works, and we have Todd that looks at engineering, we have Sam that looks at legal. I mean, just because you have an idea, that's well and good. But I mean, we have resources here, guys. That's that's the whole point of having staff. If that was the case, shut City Hall down and let BOC set up here 24/7 and answer every question. I mean, it just, it really, well, exactly, yeah. It it just really frustrates me that we have all this staff and we have these experts and we're not using them and we're just trying to steamroll something through. It just.
If I can add something.
Please.
My role is to just make recommendations. So.
Oh, yeah, I know.
The BOC can take it or leave it. So I just make the recommendation. The BOC can bring whatever they want before you. So this is well within any commissioner's rights.
No, no, completely get that. And I think the frustration is more just on the fact that we've got expert opinions or recommendations and we are choosing to ignore them. And that is my concern. Yeah, not even ask, or if you did, just keep going. So.
So that gets us to a point of a requesting a recommendation back on this.
I will second that one.
I am looking for a motion in regards to sign one urgent.
Motion for a negative recommendation.
I'll second.
I think that you should. I would highly.
For a negative recommendation pending consult with the city attorney for fine tuning the language within these to protect the city. Is that worded well? My my thing.
Do you want to include any specifics within that, such as your comments on number three, such as the financial responsibility, such as the broad term of the city in number six?
Okay, I'll add all those. Yes, thank you. Yeah, consideration for striking the sentence when both stubs can be connected, it is financial responsibility to each owner to pay for their portion of the connection. Item six, clarification on a jurisdictional body within the city to be allowed to make those decisions. And clarification of the last sentence on item three. Submotion.
Commissioner George, do you support that? That is a negative recommendation with suggestions, with the first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye against abstentions is a negative recommendation. Next item up on our agenda is also a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners. It is to review the zoning ordinance amendment, section 14-109 regarding public notice requirements. Mr. George?
Sure thing. You hinted at this earlier. So all this does is move the public notice requirement from 10 days, I believe it's 10 days before the second hearing at BOC. And it will now be pending approval of this 10 days prior to the planning commission. And that all that, so that, you know, that knocks it ahead weeks versus what it is now required. This would also apply to Board of Zoning Appeals as well. So public notice for Board of Zoning Appeals is also included. And staff recommends positive.
Questions, comments from the commission?
I have one question.
They allow us to do this? Is it, okay.
I got one quick one. And I just want to make sure I'm reading it right because I put a little note right here. Item one, general requirements, maybe reading it out loud will help me answer my own question. I don't know. It states, the planning and zoning department or its designee or its designees shall post signs on properties for which either an action by the Board of Zoning Appeals or request for change of zoning classification has been requested. Should that not state and planning commission? Or is this just simply referring to actions that go before Boza? What if it goes before planning? Because to me, it doesn't seem applicable because it doesn't say either an action by the Board of Zoning Appeals or request to change. What about actions that just come to planning and maybe not Boza? See where I'm going with that?
Yeah, the request for zoning, the change of zoning classification is automatically planning commission. But BZA doesn't handle that.
And we're not doing all planning commission items. That's why it specifically says a change in zoning classification.
But specifically the action by the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Because it's all actions of the Board of Zoning Appeals. For the planning commission part, it's just the request for a change in zoning classification. It's everything for the BVA, just zoning classification for TC.
Okay. And it kind of threw me when it starts out, planning and zoning, and then it goes back to just saying just Boza. So just making sure that that's not a clarification item. Perfect.
Question.
Commissioner.
I know, I'm delaying everything here. Question, and I think I've asked you about this before, John. We we have requirements for them being posted. We don't have requirements for them to be removed or taken down. Because I, I mean, I've driven through plenty of neighborhoods and they're just all over the place. Is it a requirement that we can put on the property owner? Or is it, the city is removed? Can we dictate that?
I don't know what happens with signs. I thought I preferred Kyle because he does it pretty easily. So.
The applicant's responsible for placing and removing the signs, and they are supposed to remove them once the project is finished. We don't have quite enough people to drive around and enforce that in real life. But that is their instruction.
Well, without language in here, we don't have the opportunity to send them letters that you take your crap down.
Adding some language.
Could we consider adding some language to that? That property owner's taken down, then we could violate them if they don't. Okay. Later, let's worry about this as it is right now, but it's a future amendment.
Yeah.
Okay.
For the questions, comments? This time, call for citizen comments. Any citizen wish to make comment? Welcome, encourage you so. Name and address for the record. See no citizen comments? Looking for a recommendation regards this item on our agenda?
With comments about letting us time for any plans to be removed and that time can be determined by staff.
Be of city.
I'll make a recommendation on our political signs or temporary, non-commercial temporary signs that involve political signs as well. We have verbiage within the sign ordinance that says within five days following the end of the election, so forth and so on. So.
Commissioner George, I think Commissioner Franklin did the second. Still, second's good. Commissioner George, you're good. That's a motion, a second for a positive recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye against abstentions is a positive recommendation. Next item up on our agenda is item 10C, which is a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners. It's review the zoning ordinance amendment to section 5-104.3 regarding variable lot subdivisions. Mr. George?
We're going to delete that section. That's all.
Need some clarification. Are you going to delete that section? Are you?
The section will be removed from the ordinance entirely. I I would opine that, I hate that word, but I would opine that it's redundant with the with the PUD process. And it doesn't serve a reason, it doesn't serve a real purpose with the PUD process that we have as we know it.
The intent that we initially thought it would is not there.
Exactly.
Correct. Questions, comments from the commission? Very well. This time, we'll call for citizen comments. See no citizen comments? I am looking for a motion in regards to this item on our agenda. It's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye against abstentions is a positive recommendation. Next item up is item 10D. It's also a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners. Review the zoning ordinance amendment to section 8-207.54 or dot four, dot A regarding open space requirements. That's Jill.
Just a short and sweet version on this one. As you know, we currently have pending legislation that came before you all in October to reduce the minimum lot size to 7,500 square feet. It passed first reading of BFC on November 10. In the process of doing that, we thought it would be behoove us to review the open space requirements. Because as it stands currently, the open space, we require 7% for all residential PUDs and then 20% for your RM8 and RM16 zoning. So our recommendation as staff, because of the smaller lots create more opportunities for amenities and open space, we thought a standard 20% across the board for all residential PUDs, instead of separating it for 7% for the non-RM8 and non-RM16. It reduces the burden on the city. It enhances the opportunity for quality of life improvements. And this would be improved recreational open space. So staff does recommend a positive recommendation back to the Board of Commissioners to just have them across the board 20%.
Questions, comments from the commission?
Of course, I've got a couple. One, this is really my main one because as I read it, it falls back in several, 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 several times within. But there's several references to this being at final master development plan that go through here. I got so many circled that that I can't, you know, point them out. But I would prefer to see this at preliminary master development plan because as I was told not too long back, we got to a final master development plan that I personally did not like, and I didn't think was like the preliminary master development plan that we approved. Therefore, I would like to see this requirement be upheld at preliminary master development plan so that the planning commission still has the ability to make adjustments, should it be deemed so. Because when it comes to final, I'm not aware that we can make any further adjustments. We're just kind of blessing it and moving it forward. So I would prefer to see something like this come to us, be a requirement that's completed at the presentation of preliminary versus final. That would be my major suggestion on it because it does, it, it, final, 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 as you read the documents, all in there. So I would recommend it to be at preliminary master development plan. And just one other random one out there, just falls underneath the recreational equipment. It says, all recreational equipment provided within any shared general use recreation space shall be durable commercial grade equipment. Did we inspect that? Because I've seen some playground stuff, and if it's commercial, well, I'm running for President of the United States next week. Yeah. But it doesn't seem, I've seen a couple, not going to throw any particular projects under a bus, but their stuff looks like they went to Lowe's and bought it.
I can tell you personally, I've been out on landscape inspections, and we have had them withdraw equipment because it did not meet the specifications. There are, I can't remember the exact qualifications on it, but there are specifications for playground equipment nationally, except the playground equipment. And we do adhere to those. So we, it's the Consumer Product Commission, excuse me.
Yeah, you say it right here. I mean, Yeah, you say it right here. I mean, this gives you teeth, is what I'm saying.
And we have had them remove them. I mean, so, and it is something that is, and it's looked at, at, you know, final landscapes. If we go through and that is a requirement there, but that is something that we put in within the site plans or within the, the PUDs and everything that we do require the commercial grade equipment that adhere to the Consumer Product Safety Commission's requirements. And we can't, we do have the teeth to make them pull them out and we have. I mean, I can personally adhere to that.
I love it. That's what I, that's what I was looking for because it's like this thing gives you all the teeth to do it. And so I hope you're holding them to the fire on that right there because uh, we had a lot of talk tonight about amenities and, uh, yeah, I mean, bless anybody that puts together any kind of swing set. So they're, rather build a house than a swing set. Uh, further questions, comments, discussion for the commission? It's a call for citizen comments regards this item on the agenda. Any citizen comments? Seeing no citizen comments, I am looking for a recommendation in regards to this item on the agenda. I will make a recommendation, a, a motion for a positive recommendation with the change within the ordinance to be at preliminary uh, master development plan and not final master development plan. Is my motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against abstentions, that is a positive recommendation. I am looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against abstentions. We are adjourned.